Good evening. Tonight, this is the Cortez City Council regular meeting and today is Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. The time is 7:30 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Linda, can we have the roll call?
Keef Offer.
Here.
Dehaven.
Spruul.
Here.
Dobree.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Medina.
Here. And Councilmember Dehaven is absent tonight, but we still have a quorum. And then approval of the agenda, I think we have needs to amend the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Agenda Item 12 is, was a scheduled executive session and for consultation with myself, I don't believe the council needs that consultation tonight, so I am suggesting that the agenda be amended to delete Agenda Item 12A.
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve the agenda as amended, removing Item 12A.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Spruul.
Lewis.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Offer.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to number two on our agenda, the consent agenda. The listing under consent agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or council member may request an item may be removed from the consent agenda at the time prior to council's vote. I will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion after reading the list. A, approval of the council workshop slash special meeting and agenda minutes for March 25th, 2025. B, approval of the expenditure list for April 8th, 2025. C, approval of a renewal application on a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Hunan Kitchen, Inc., DBA Hunan Chinese Restaurant located at 2561 East Main Street, Cortez. D, approval of a renewal application for retail liquor store license for Elevated Liquors LLC, DBA Elevated Liquors located at 430 North Broadway, Cortez. And E, approval of a renewal application on a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Thai Cortez LLC, DBA Thai Cortez located at 1430 East Main Street, Suites 1 through 3, Cortez.
I move that the council approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Randall and seconded by Dobree or Lewis? I think Dobree was first.
Spruul.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Lewis.
Aye.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're moving on to number three on our agenda, public participation. There's no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of 30 minutes. The speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. So this is a time for the public to address us for any items that are not on the public hearing portion of our agenda. So I'd like to invite Nico. And then just make sure the microphone is green and then as soon as you start, the three-minute time will start.
Not green.
Oh, push the button, is there a button?
Got it.
Perfect.
Hello, and thank you for your time. It fills me with great hope to see and hear that things are indeed going to happen for the skate park. It is a very deeply beautiful and diverse skate park community. The next thing I want to do is bring a few things to your attention. Firstly, is ensuring that the work that is going to be done at the skate park is not done fast, but it is done correctly by an experienced company who has built skate parks. I personally reached out to a company called Team Payne, who has built quite a few skate parks in Colorado, including the skate park in Durango and one in Grand Junction. After informing them of the work that needs to be done on the skate park here in Cortez, Team Payne expressed they had availability in August. I have already proposed Team Payne to the Parks and Rec Department as a possible contractor. As a representative of the skateboard community, I would endorse them as one of the best options. Considering the skate park has been there for over 20 years with absolutely no oversight or maintenance, I feel Team Payne proposing to do the parks construction in August is in line with the city's timeline. Hiring professional skate park builders will ensure a quality product and can work with can work within city parameters. I believe hiring a local contractor with no skate knowledge cannot guarantee top-tier skate park or experience or functionality. Once professional building takes place, maintenance will be required, like weekly sweeping or daily leaf blowing of the park. These positive interactions will create a genuine relationship with the skate park community and the city. Finally, I would like to bring to your attention that in 2018, the city got a grant from the Community Heart and Soul, a nonprofit organization, to sanction the skate park as a graffiti space for artful expression. Here is a quote from an article about it. "To increase youth participation in the skate park, youth were given the ability to graffiti in the skate park without consequence, and graffiti incidents in towns dropped dramatically. Because of these sanctions, only art that is offensive should be painted over. This cultivates positive expression and culture, birthing the feeling of belonging and freedom to a local skate park. I urge you to listen to the skateboarding community, get a professional contractor, Team Payne, to do the job, stop covering the art that is being expressed at the skate park, and stay true to the city's agreement from 2018. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you. All right, do we have any other commenters tonight? Okay, we will close the public participation section and move on to number four on our agenda, presentations. 4A is Arbor Day proclamation. So we'll start with our Director of Parks and Recreation, Creighton Wright.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. Thank you for the time tonight. I'll do a quick overview of Arbor Day, which will include a quick history lesson, benefits of trees and Arbor Day generally, an update with where we are with Arbor Day celebration this year, and then give a broad overview of our forestry program and some recent updates. So first off, history lesson. Arbor Day was created by Sterling Morgan in 1872 in Nebraska to promote the importance of trees in rural communities. He encouraged towns to plant trees, offering prizes to those who participated. It was estimated that a million trees were planted during this initiative and inspiring other states and countries to celebrate Arbor Day. That basically kicked off what we know today as Arbor Day. As far as benefits go, Arbor Day gives us the opportunity to appreciate the trees in our communities and their impact on our lives, enjoy the shade in our parks, consider planting a tree for future generations, and honor the diverse species that enrich our environment. Celebrate urban, our urban forest for the benefit of ourselves and generations to come through Arbor Day. So that was history, that was a little bit of benefit of Arbor Day. Our celebration this year, we're still in the process of trying to settle on a date. The last two weeks of April, our schools are in testing, and we typically will have schools come out and we'll do an Arbor Day at Parker de Vida. And so we're still trying to negotiate a date. It might end up being the first week in May is kind of where it's landing. So as soon as I know, I'll let Manager Sanders know to pass along to council. In our forestry program, it's been in a state of, I'll say, holding at best, which we've not done a whole lot of urban forestry work. We have been attempting to hire an urban, or a city forester for the last year with no luck. We recently had an individual who accepted the position and then couldn't complete the pre-employment requirements and therefore was not hired by the city. I'm at a point where we can't wait any longer, so I have reached out and brought under contract a local arborist who is going to do an assessment on our urban forest, identify our urgent issues, and then address those urgent issues. He is also going to be putting together a pruning plan for us that is a little bit, because it's not urgent, I don't have to have that work done right away. What we're going to do is have that pruning plan put together by this arborist, and then we're going to bid out that work to all the tree companies in town so that everyone has a fair shot at doing that work. And so you'll start seeing some movement on various different trees. We have a handful of pretty urgent issues that we're going to be addressing here in the next month or so, so know that you'll be seeing tree crews out in our parks and right of ways and that kind of stuff, addressing some urgent issues. So that, Mayor, is it for my overview on Arbor Day and just a general update on our forestry program, and I'll let you read the proclamation.
Great. Thank you, Creighton. Any questions for Creighton? Okay. Proclamation. "Whereas Arbor Day is a celebration of trees and a day dedicated to the importance of our urban forests, recognizing the critical role trees play in our community's health, beauty, and sustainability. And whereas, the strength of a tree lies not only in its enduring presence, but in the benefits it provides us: cleaner air, shade on warm days, habitats for wildlife, and the beauty that enhances our lives. And whereas, the roots of a tree symbolize our community's foundation, deeply intertwined with our heritage, culture, and environment, providing us with the support we need to thrive. And whereas, trees are vital for combating warming climate, providing oxygen, sequestering carbon, and mitigating stormwater runoff, further affirming their role as pillars of a resilient ecosystem. And whereas, we recognize and celebrate the dedication of our local tree planting efforts, from neighborhood initiatives to school programs, which foster environmental stewardship and enhance the natural landscape of our city. And whereas, it is our collective responsibility to nurture our green spaces, protecting existing trees, and inspire future generations to appreciate and care for the natural world around them. And whereas, on this Arbor Day, we recognize all residents, organizations, and businesses to participate in tree planting activities and educational programs, to commemorate the strength of a tree and its significance in our lives. Now therefore, I, Rachel B. Medina, Mayor of the City of Cortez, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the City of Cortez, and urge all residents to celebrate Arbor Day by planting trees, participating in community tree planting events, and learning about the benefits of trees; support efforts to protect and enhance our urban forests by caring for existing trees and advocating for responsible forestry practices; and showing the strength of a tree by planting trees in their yards, parks, and community spaces. Furthermore, I encourage all residents to join us in making Cortez a greener and more vibrant city through the planting and care of trees." Dated this eighth of, this eighth day of April 2025.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Creighton. Okay, we're going to move on to number five on our agenda, public hearings. 5A is Resolution Number 4, Series 2025. A resolution approving the condominium plat for the Sligo Plaza condominium plat on property located on Lot 1, Block 2 of the Schwartz Minor subdivision in the commercial highway zone as submitted by Sligo Land Group LLC with the conditions stated in the resolution. Presented by Contract City Planner Nancy Dolls.
Thank you, Mayor. Waiting for us to come up here. Our first request is a condominium plat for 111 Sligo. It is to convert the existing commercial strip mall type development into separate for sale occupancies. The vicinity map up here. So it's this property that I'm circling right there, sort of across from Walmart. The intent, again, is just to take that existing development, create the condominium plat, which will then allow for each separate occupancy to be sold individually to the commercial tenants or other commercial tenants, obviously, or other interested parties. Just to explain a little bit, so there are three current tenants in this building, one in this building. There is a proposed pad right here that would be a future additional occupancy. And then when we get to the condo plat, they'll create a, an additional lot here that could in the future be developed with an additional commercial building. The property is own commercial highway, which is C, and it is bounded on essentially all sides by commercial occupancies. So we've got the Walmart, the property to the west is zone commercial, although it's currently vacant. As far as development standards, the property currently as developed meets all the development standards, no surprise. And in addition, there is, for example, with parking, they have overparked for the four current occupancies with, so there's enough parking for the additional building, and then probably enough for any building that would be constructed on here. Although, just to note that when this new lot comes in, and this one too, it would require site plan approval coming back in front of the planning commission and the city council so that we can check all that. As far as standards for review, they're very, they're the same as for a subdivision. However, in this case, with condominium, there's additional standards. Most of them are really applicable to multifamily development. Essentially, what we want you to, what the code wants you to look at is, are the easements adequate? Have they established appropriate requirements for the individual owners to maintain the property? And they have submitted all that, and we provided that for you. As far as comments, we really didn't have very much of anything. There were some questions provided by our GIS coordinator, all of which are, were answered and are fine with this development. So really, there's no major concerns with this. The planning commission looked at this project last week and recommended approval. Staff is also recommending approval. We have three conditions on the recommendation. We've provided a resolution for your consideration. The conditions include a sort of standard, will they meet all requirements of the code and any agencies? There's a couple of different conditions that are needed for condominium, and those are in our code, which is that they do need to notify, the property owner needs to notify, it says residential tenants. However, believe that would still be appropriate for commercial tenants, at least 90 days prior to any termination of leases. And then that this subdivision plat would then need to be filed for record, submitted to the city for consideration within six months of your approval here tonight, or it would be deemed void and they'd have to start over again. Are there any questions?
So we'll go ahead and open this for public comment, or do we have the applicant here who wants to speak first?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it's on. Unless you want to go taller? This is fine. My name is Ken Cohen. I'm the property manager for Sligo Land Group and Sundance, anyway Summit, changed names, Summit Dental. And first of all, I'd like to thank Nancy and Cheryl for their work on this. They've done a great job. As you can tell, they've presented it very well. We're very happy to be in the town. What this has brought about is it was a private owned between two partners, and they wanted to make sure that the people that owned the, that rented the facilities had the opportunity to keep their equipment and stuff and whatever they put in financially that they could not have to move out. And so we are selling the, each building to whoever owns it. So it's just a way to keep the people in the community, the businesses. And if you have any question, like, we did talk about it last time in the planning, the lot, when we did this 10 years ago, we had two phases. The first phase was the three buildings, A, B, and C. The second phase was going to be that vacant lot, which, as Nancy said, we need to bring that in if we ever develop it and get approval on that. The other three buildings were approved in the original document. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Well then, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Do we have anyone from the audience who would like to comment on this application? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and then entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve Resolution, Resolution Number 4, Series 2025. A resolution approving the condominium plat for the Sligo Plaza condominium plat on property located on Lot 1, Block 2 of the Schwartz Minor subdivision in the commercial highway C-zone as submitted by the Sligo Land Group LLC with three conditions stated in the resolution.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Randall?
Dobree.
Aye.
Randall. Lewis.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Offer.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll move on to B on our, 5B on our agenda, Resolution Number 5, Series 2025. A resolution approving a conditional use permit and site plan for property located at 1050 Lebanon Road, Cortez, as submitted by Anthony Moore and Mary Lancaster with the conditions stated in the resolution. Presented by our Contract City Planner Nancy Dolls.
Madam Mayor, I am going to recuse myself from Resolution Number 5, Series 2025.
Okay, thank you. So we'll give Councilmember Keef Offer a moment to leave the room, and then we'll get started with the presentation. All right, thank you. Thank you.
And, and just while Rachel is handing out a revised engineering site plan and then a revised site plan that we received after packets were prepared, and I'll talk, talk you through those a little bit as to the changes. They're fairly minor. So this is a request for a conditional use and a site plan. The request is, the business is log home manufacturing, storage of wildland firefighting equipment and firewood processing on, located at 1050 Lebanon Road, which is where I put the big star there. So here's the highway, 91, Lebanon Road comes off. It's basically the first, second parcel on your right on Lebanon Road. The use is surrounded by a mix of land uses. Probably one of the biggest mixes we have. Right adjacent, this is the entrance road to Carpenter Preserve. You'll see that a little better in the upcoming. And that's the green colored properties. The gray colored properties are all zoned industrial. We've got red here, which is Commercial Highway currently, and this includes the applicant's other site. And as you recall, or some of you will recall, the property, this property over here is actually owned also by the applicant and was rezoned industrial for similar type uses. By rezoning to industrial, they do not need a conditional use permit. What were the, the remaining land use is single-family residential, zoned R1. So I just got you close, closer up on the property here. It does have a little sliver across, across the Lebanon Road, but it's a 10-acre parcel, mostly level and vacant. Historic land use was for the old drive-in on the property. So this is our most current site plan for the use. I do wanna make note for those of us that were, for those of you in the audience that were here at the Planning Commission meeting last week, there have been some slight changes that I wanna point those out from the beginning. But those are that the log stacks were moved to the south and east to get out of a floodplain area on the property. There was noted of a, an additional structure, which is a three-sided structure around the firewood processing area. And some additional details here were added on the, for the driveway entrance as requested by the engineer. But basically, the site plan here, it's a little bit of an unusual property, project for you in that there aren't any permanent uses. There's two structures here, but for the most part, the storage of the logs, the building of the log homes, the processing of the firewood, the storage of the equipment, things will come and go and perhaps move around on the property often as needed for operation of the, of the business. They'll talk about this a little bit more. So we do have, you know, areas that will stay clear now that are floodplain, et cetera. But for the most part, this is the general locations of things, and you may see them change a little bit over time. The other things to note, we'll go on from that. This is their engineering plan. I do wanna note again for the public that at this point, they are not proposing any grading of the hillside that has been talked about in the past. Okay, so why are we here as far as the conditional use permit? As you recall, it's zone commercial. This use, sometimes considered more of an industrial use, is defined in our current land use code as manufacturing of wood products. That use specifically mentions log home manufacturing. So it calls out what they're doing. One of the main uses on the site requires that conditional use permit. As far as the wildland equipment, storage, et cetera, we had to make a call that that's most similar to contractor equipment and storage yard. There's not a definition in our current code that I can call out and show you, but it does appear that it would be similar to have the trucks and the equipment for wildland firefighting stored on the property. So both of those main uses there do require a conditional use permit in the commercial zone. So going over the criteria, what do you have to look at when you're considering a conditional use permit? That it, first criteria is that the proposed use is compatible with adjacent existing uses and other uses in the zone district. And what compatibility talks about is appearance, site design, scope, landscaping, maybe most importantly, control of adverse impacts, including noise, vibration, smoke, dust, gas, dust, odor, lighting, glare, traffic, et cetera. The next criteria is, has this use incorporated design features sufficient to protect adjacent uses? Looking at how they design the site with circulation, safety provisions, access, buffering, fencing, and site building placement. Of course, in this case, there really aren't site buildings. There's two, two structures that are three-sided, intended to help buffer noise. They're not proposing any fencing or other buffering in that the uses, they believe, are naturally buffered by topography and by the existing uses that are adjacent as far as commercial and industrial uses nearby. Next criteria, that they demonstrate that all accessory uses are necessary and desirable. In this case, we've looked at the accessory uses, perhaps being the firewood storage, firewood cutting. That is absolutely determined to be accessory and that what they're doing is hoping to keep using the waste products. So the log, it's, they, they use every bit of these logs. I think they'll tell you about that. They, they're, they're doing the fire mitigation in the forest, bringing the logs back, using what they can to make log homes, and the, the waste product that they can't use for that, they cut up into firewood. I think what's important for everyone to understand is that the firewood won't be sold from the site. It will be taken off-site for sale. And the waste products like sawdust, et cetera, from the firewood will, are also taken off-site and used for other purposes. So even the sawdust gets used for apparently animal wet bedding and, and mulching and other uses. Criteria number four is that adequate public services are available. In this case, they don't need a lot of public services. There's no water on the site. There's not use of sewer. They don't, won't even use electricity on the site. Fire protection or police might be occasionally needed, hopefully. Not, but of course, those are available, given the location of this use. They will just note that any, the employees, when they're onsite, would be, can go right across the street to their other commercial location to use any facilities. Number five, they've made provisions to maintain the area. And we'll talk about that. I can't do this. Condition, criteria number six, the last one to talk about, is that the use would conform to adopted plans, hours of operation, policies and requirements, et cetera, and all other regulations of the code. And so what's important is that you've reviewed their narrative and listened to how they operate the site. Those will be, that narrative will become essentially conditions of approval. So in the narrative, when they talk about hours of operation, those are what we will hold them to going forward into the future. There were a couple of the criteria for site plan development that I wanted to talk through a little bit. Number one is surfacing. So I've quoted Sections 5.02, J4, and F2 do require that the access driveway have a durable, dust-free, all-weather surface. Goes on to talk about what that would be. In this case, they, the, the site does have some pavement into it. And I've got a little clip here from their engineering plan that they, that their engineer states that they do have 60 feet of a paved entrance and that the, that it is adequate and durable for their use. We've talked a little bit about what does that surfacing criteria mean for the rest of the site. Much of it is leftover gravel from the historic use of the drive-in, but they will be using the rest of the site. They are not proposing any additional gravel or paving of that site, preferring to keep it in that more natural condition. You're gonna see, we're suggesting some conditions to ensure that we don't end up with dust or other issues because of that. Landscaping and buffering. So I have the commercial industrial landscape requirements up there in front of you. It does require that a minimum of 10% of the commercial area to be developed, be landscaped. And they include percentages that they're proposing. In this case, because it's a different type of land use, they're not, and they don't have water on site, they're not proposing any specific landscaping except for a couple little areas at the, the entrance where they will do some zero scaping and probably decorate a little bit with raw, with a log entrance gate feature type. But given that they're not necessarily, hoping not to disturb some of it, they're not proposing to do any specific landscaping or planting of trees or bushes for the site. So Planning Commission looked at this last week. They did make a recommendation for approval. It was with the following conditions. And I guess I'll go through those a little bit. That are standard condition, number A there, that all criteria of the code be met. I want you to note that it does say there, as amended by decision of City Council. The reason we've added that is because they specifically won't be meeting the landscaping provisions of the code. And we wanna make sure that that's clear, if that's your desire that, and you feel that's appropriate to not meet the landscaping provisions, that you make that, make that very clear in your condition here. Number, or B, recommendation B, condition B, would be that they meet all requirements of Cortez Sanitation District. There is a sewer line right through this property. It's a main sewer line for the city. And they're, they wanna make sure that that's protected. They are okay with items being placed over the easement as long as they can be easily moved in the event of an emergency where they have to get in and dig that up. Address shall be clearly marked for emergency response. The applicant shall comply with the submitted narrative at all times, including but not limited to operation of the business, noise levels, hours of operation. E would be that the applicant shall control dust on the property. We gave them some options here. We know which ones they don't want, but shall control dust on the property by either paving, other surfacing, vegetation, watering, or chemical means. And that's due to the fact that they'll be moving around and messing up that property. Obviously, it's likely that it could become exposed dirt and dust issues in the future. But this gives them that option of watering it down or other, or chemical means to keep that from becoming a problem or nuisance to neighboring properties. The applicant must comply with CRS 2512103, which is the maximum permissible noise levels of the state at all times. That's been an issue with adjacent residential properties. G, the applicant shall comply with all provisions of the fire code. That would lead to things like fire extinguishers on-site and distances between piles of wood, et cetera. And finally, that the applicant shall comply with engineering comments that we have already received. We provided that, those for you separately. For the most part, they've already, that, that engineering plan and the revised site plan that you saw tonight do address all those conditions. Are there any questions?
I guess I have a question about the agency review. How come there is no comment from the fire district?
You know, they rarely comment for us, but Sean Canada is the fire official, and he does comment on that.
Okay. Yeah, as long as someone with that background, then is.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Is there any huge discrepancies, differences between the 2009 land use code and the one we have going into effect on the 18th?
Huge?
Or any?
What, for this property?
Yes.
You know, I haven't done a thorough review, but there are a couple things you, you would know, you could note. Number one would be our paving requirement, so that surfacing requirement. The new code says that if you don't have, if it's more of an industrial use and you don't have more than four spaces required and no retail, you don't have to pave. So in that case, it's closer really to what they're proposing here. The landscaping requirements are very different in the new code. It would require external buffering and trees, et cetera. Although, there is a provision in the new code, again, to, to ask for forbearance on those types of requirements when things like water aren't available to use, so.
Just, correct me if I'm wrong, but the new code is almost less restrictive and more conducive to what they're applying for than the old code? Is that correct?
It, it really did look at some of the uses we have on these larger properties that are more industrial in nature and gave some provisions for that. Where the old code kinda assumed everyone was building a building and a parking lot and doing that type of use.
Okay. Well, any more questions, or we can invite the applicant up to speak?
You might? You have a?
Great. You even have your own.
Yeah.
I don't know if you need to have a USB in a C.
Yeah. Let's see. I could get in, in there. I don't know, tricky, huh? Force it.
There you go.
Okay. Pull that up.
Sorry about that. Put it right on here.
I usually put it here.
Yeah, it's easier to see.
I'm never patient, I know.
How do I drive it?
There you go. You're up.
All right? How do I make it go forward?
Just push here.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council members. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Shelley DeConish. I'm an attorney, and I represent Independent Log Company and Mary and Tony with respect to this proposed project here on 1050 Lebanon Road. I'm gonna skip the first three slides. Whoops, they're not going. I'm sorry. Let's see. Okay. Just a little background on Independent Log Company. They have over 35 years of experience in log home manufacturing, wildland fire suppression and mitigation, and firewood processing, which is accessory use that they do so they can not have any wood waste. Anthony Moore is a master log crafter, wildland firefighter, and firefighting task force leader. ILC has had 54 contracts with the U.S. Forest Service for wildland firefighting and mitigation, fire mitigation. And that experience has included some more local firefighting activities here in Monizuma This is just a slide. I wanted you to see an example of, can you guys see my slides on your screen? Okay. Just an example of their Alamosa site. So you can just kinda see the wide open spaces. This one will be different. It won't be this large, of course, and there won't be any permanent structures on this site, just a couple of lean-tos to cover some equipment that we'll talk about in a minute. But you can see how the site is laid out and the log decks on the other side and how they're spaced so that people can move around and work with them. The project has some real nice public benefits. It's gonna create some full-time temporary and seasonal jobs right here in Cortez. The firefighting and fire mitigation capabilities enhance the safety of the community and surrounding area. Firewood, of course, is an important commodity for those on limited or fixed incomes as an alternate heating option. And the log homes are a very attractive option, especially here in the beautiful setting of Cortez. As I drove down here today, I was noticing all the areas where a home like this would look very nice. So this is an example of the type of homes that they build. And there's another more close look. And there's an interior. So I'll talk a little bit about the process on the site. The logs are delivered to the site by trucks, as you can see in that picture. They're taken off the trucks. It takes about three truckloads to build one home. So they bring the logs, they take the logs off the truck, they stack them, then they cut and notch them for, and then assemble them on-site. The logs are from beetle kill and other forest management practices, so they're helping steward our national forests by taking the beetle kill out for these beautiful homes. The, the processing is relatively minimal. It's not a lumber mill by any means. They take a whole log and notch it and take the, the slab off. Then they assemble the home on-site, then they disassemble it and take it to the place where the home will, will be constructed. So there's no permanent storage of anything on the site. It's brought there, assembled, disassembled, and taken away. And these are just some images of what it looks like when they're assembling. So you can see it's mostly just people with hand tools. There's, of course, a miser to do some of the bigger cutting, but this is what, what the work looks like. Another example. The wood that is not suitable for use in the log home, and then also the, the slab and the, sort of the offal from the notching and cutting, those are used for firewood or other uses. The slab is used for some ceremonial and artwork. The sawdust from cutting the firewood is blown into a enclosed trailer and it's taken off-site and used in animal bedding and landscaping and things like that. No permanent structures are proposed on this site. Here's an example of the, the lean-to type structure that they're gonna put over the two pieces of equipment. It also gives them a place to get out of the rain if, when they're working. And it also buffers sound. The open work area is crucial, so all those areas in between the log decks are used to move around and load and unload things. And fencing and screening around those would interfere with the, with the log home manufacturing So just a little bit of procedural history. They've been in the process here since about 2022. It's been a really long time, so they're very excited and anxious to get, to get up and running on the site. They've done a lot of neighbor outreach and have talked a lot with the neighbors about their concerns and had some very good back and forth on the impacts and what they're gonna do to address it, and I'll talk about that more. They applied for a rezone initially at the urging of staff. That was denied because industrial uses, there are a lot of industrial uses that could be made on the property. So the conditional use permit is much better. It's limited to this use and with these conditions, so everybody knows what they're, what they're getting. The PNZ recommended approval in October, but there was a little bit of a mix-up with the site plan and the drainage plan, so we went back to the PNZ and they recommended approval last week with the site plan that you see before you with those additional changes that Nancy talked about. And those changes were just made to address the engineering comments. I think Nancy talked about the engineering comments in some detail, but I just wanna add a little bit. The conditions were, the drainage plan needed an engineer stamp. That's been added. The drainage needed to be described a little bit better. The engineer wanted dimensions of the entry point and the culvert, and those were added. And then the engineer noted that the log deck was partially in the 100-year floodplain, so that was moved out. Your decision tonight, of course, as Nancy said, is for a conditional use permit and site plan review for log home manufacturing and equipment yard with an accessory use of firewood processing. All the proposed uses are allowed in this commercial zone with a CUP, and the firewood processing is a necessary and compatible use. Because the code already allows these uses with the CUP, the issue is not whether, whether this use should be here, it's whether, as proposed, it's compatible with the surrounding area. And we, of course, believe that they've demonstrated compliance and with, with the code and compatibility. And we'll talk about that a little more. I don't think this really came up, so I don't think I need to go into this issue about open storage. The, the gist of it is, these, the open storage is inherent in the use, so we believe that because the CUP, these uses are allowed with the CUP, the open storage just comes along with these uses, and you couldn't really have these uses without it. There was just some ambiguity in how open storage was defined in your code. With respect to the landscaping requirement, I mentioned earlier how they're gonna be using the whole site and moving around, and the landscaping would basically just get sort of trampled and there's no water to keep it alive. So it's not really, vegetative landscaping would not be very functional on this site. Also, the, generally speaking in land use codes, yours included, commercial uses require more landscaping because you have the public visiting and you want shade and you want those areas to be presentable and pretty, whereas industrial uses are a little more focused on functionality, efficiency, and use of the site. And then also, water conservation is a, is a major concern. With respect to compatibility, the whole area around this site, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, is, is quite heavy commercial and industrial. This, the proposed use is very compatible with the uses that you're seeing in these images, which are the surrounding uses. The neighboring uses and all the uses surrounding the Carpenter Trail are heavy, commercial, and industrial, with a lot of outdoor storage and without any buffering or screening. And this does not appear to impact the use or the enjoyment of the trail by people in your community and visitors. So we don't believe any buffering or screening is necessary or useful. A little bit about the intensity of the use. I just wanna make clear that Independent Log, they're not a logging company. Their timber cutting activities are limited to forest fire fuel reduction and removal of beetle kill. The proposed use is not a lumber mill. They, they build only a few homes each year, so it's not like there would be constant truck traffic in and out every day. They'll bring the logs in, it'll take a while to assemble, and then they'll, the trucks will leave and, and take them away to the site. During fire season, there won't be a lot of activity on the site at all because they'll be out fighting wildland fires all over the West, so the site will be fairly quiet most of the time. The hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, with, of course, occasional fire emergency mobilization. So if there's a fire and they have to come on-site and get the fire equipment, they'll do that, but only as needed. So that might be outside of those hours. The impacts, I think it's worthwhile to note that a lot of the uses allowed by Wright in the commercial zone would actually be fairly impactful on this site. Because there are no permanent structures or anything proposed, when Independent Log leaves the site, it will look very much like it looked before they got here. So no, no permanent buildings there. There won't be a lot of customers coming, there won't be any customers coming and going, but what I mean is sort of day-to-day busy traffic. So as uses go, it's not as intense as some of the uses that are allowed in the zone by They've done a lot of noise testing, and they invited the neighbors to come and participate in this testing. And at each, they tested at the property line, they tested next to the, right next to the firewood processor, they tested up on the hill by the homes, and at all those areas, the noise was within acceptable levels. Of course, the state statute applies at the property boundary, and they will be able to comply with the state regulations for noise. Tony has also equipped, outfitted his equipment with special mufflers for increased sound buffering, and then they'll be in the lean-to structure, which provides additional noise The site, it doesn't have as much dust potential as you might think. The picture I had up earlier was, showed mostly dirt, but this site is actually almost completely covered with gravel from the prior use. And then Tony has also added, I don't know, I forget how much you said, quite a bit of gravel himself. So he intends to keep that site dust-free by applying gravel. For dust-prone areas in dry times, they do have water trucks and they can go get water and easily water the site down. This is just a image of the site to show you how, how much gravel there is. The access is a durable, dust-free, all-weather surface as required by the code. It's asphalt at the entry point, and then as you come farther on the site, it's gravel. The applicant will maintain the driveway in a dust-free condition. Parking areas for employees are gravel. And they, for several reasons, they don't wanna pave the site. The, the large trucks are a little bit hard on it, for one thing, and also the increase of impervious service has some implications for the, for the use of the site that aren't, they'd rather have it be a better draining site. Dimensions at the entrance point are shown on the site plan, and these are just some images to show you the width there, which was measured at 60 feet, as Nancy said. There's also an image of the culvert, so you can see how large it is and clean and clear. These are the drainage swells around the, this is the culvert on the left, and the other two are the drainage swells on the property. They won't be doing anything to increase drainage or runoff. They're leaving the site mainly as it is in terms of drainage. They will not be using the Carpenter Trail access road for any purpose. They'll always come in and off of Lebanon Drive onto the site, or Lebanon Road. The use does not entail any hazardous material storage or transportation. Nancy talked a little bit about the buffers. Generally speaking, the, the, I already mentioned the Carpenter Trail and how it's surrounded by industrial with no buffers, and it doesn't appear to hinder the use of the trail, or its beauty, frankly. With respect to the residential neighborhood, there's quite an incline there, so it wouldn't be very practical. There's almost no buffer you could build that would, that would work against a hill of that, of that height. But they are taking great care to minimize the noise and things that the buffering would intend to mitigate, noise and dust. There's no junk or rubbish storage. The equipment will be operational that they're storing there, used in their firefighting activities. All the wood is just there temporarily until it's processed and moved off-site. And these are just some images of the site, so you can see the elevation changes, and then sort of how flat the site is at the bottom there. This is looking, I believe, from Lebanon Road toward the trail. And this is from the Carpenter Trail area, looking back toward the site. My gosh, you guys live in a beautiful place. And just another image of the site from the parking lot of, of the Carpenter Trail. And just another view of the site from the top of the hill, looking down. So I did wanna talk a little bit about, I've mentioned a couple times... And just another view of the site from the top of the hill, looking down. So I did want to talk a little bit about, I've mentioned a couple times that the surrounding landowners haven't been required to provide any buffers of the Carpenter Trail. And I do believe it would be unduly burdensome on this applicant and unfair for them to have to do that. And also, the noise and dust and the use of the site, I don't believe is as intense as the neighbors originally thought. So we believe that the impacts are mitigated. We talked about fencing. So I think the, with that, we just respectfully request that you approve the conditional use permit and the site plan. And if you have any questions, I or Tony would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant before we open for public hearing?
Okay. All right, and then we're going to go ahead and open this for public comment. And so we'll, are we taking cards for this, or how do we want to organize hearing from everybody? Just first come, first served? Okay. So each person will have three minutes to speak. Just start with your name, and is there any other information we need from the applicant, like address, just name? Okay. Name, and then the light will turn yellow when you have one minute left, just to give you a warning. All right, great.
My name is Cliff Giffen. My wife-
Oh, sorry, sir. Let's make sure the microphone's on. There's a button to push.
Testing, one, two, three.
Perfect. Thank you.
My name is Cliff Giffen. My wife, Carol Taylor, and I live at 913 Ridge Drive in Cortez. Our residential lot borders the property for which the conditional use permit is applied for. I oppose the approval of the conditional use as applied for. I do not believe the applicant has included design features to adequately protect adjacent uses and control adverse impacts. The land use code provides for the council to impose upon approval conditions that are designed to reasonably mitigate any adverse impacts upon surrounding properties. I submitted a comment letter to the city regarding this application. In this letter, I have included conditions of approval. The council could include that might reasonably mitigate these adverse impacts to the adjacent, single-family residential zone property. The decision to be made is whether the proposed use is in compliance with the City of Cortez land use code. I do not make that decision. The applicant does not make that decision. You, as city councilors, make that decision. Therefore, if the council should decide to approve the application for conditional use, I request that the council, as provided for in the land use code, impose and establish the conditions of operation that I have included in my comment letter. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our next public speaker.
Good evening. I'm Gala Park, and I'm concerned about things that are in the application, particularly, the application repeatedly says, as we have heard also tonight, that the two abutting residences are already naturally buffered from the proposed land use by the height difference of the existing bluff on the south property line. That bluff is private property, and it doesn't belong to Independent Log. It belongs to the residences whose houses are on the hill. And to propose using that bluff as a buffer against any kind of problem, noise, vibrations, dust, any problem, is a proposal to use other people's property without permission or without compensation. Independent Log needs to have an application that proposes to use just their land, not other people's land. That hillside is not landscaped, but it is people's backyard. It is used on a regular basis. You just heard from Cliff Giffen. He's one of them that owns much of that hillside. And he does use that property, and he should not have to put up with excess noise, excess fumes, whatever. The regulations say he needs to keep those problems on his land, and yet the application is proposing to use his land as a buffer, and that's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
There should be a button up front that says "push" at the bottom. And then once it turns, once the light turns green, you know it's on.
I'll just, I'll just use this one.
Okay.
If I can read it. Okay, I'm Carol Taylor, and my husband Cliff Giffen, and I live at 913 Ridge Drive. We've been there for 29 years. And one of the properties, and we have one of the properties that border Independent Log Company. I first want to thank Tony Moore for reaching out to the Ridge Drive and extended neighbors over the last couple of months. Thank you. But I also want to go on record for opposing the approval of the conditional use permit because the use is not compatible with the adjacent residential properties. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next public speaker?
Bob Vercato's here. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Something that Tony's proposing to do is build log cabins on the property, use his logs and move them off and put them, reconstruct them. Y'all actually already have somebody that's been doing that for years in Cortez over there by, it's close to the Nine Hole Golf Course. I don't know if y'all, any of that rings a bell with anybody. I don't know that they're actually doing it now today, but, you know, that's been going on over there for years. Just thought I'd throw that out there at you guys. And then, when I first came in here and you guys first, I don't know what y'all called this, bidet, some kind of forestry day?
Arbor day.
And then y'all say, "Go plant some trees." One of the very first thing you tell him in his little plant up here is, "Oh, you can't plant any trees." I'm kind of confused when it comes to that on that. So just thought I'd point a little few of them, you know, things that just, you guys are proposing and saying just don't make any sense. And another thing I'd like to know is, how many man-hours and tax dollars have we spent in the last four years messing around with this, trying to do whatever y'all are trying to do? Let this man go to work. He's trying to bring in jobs, trying to bring in things into this city. Or why don't we just use tax money to go build a skateboard park, no offense. But, you know, that doesn't bring in anything. That doesn't do anybody any good in this community, my three minutes. You know, just pointing all of this stuff out. Let's stop wasting money. Do I need to bring in Doge? I can make a phone call Elon Musk, maybe we can start looking at some fraud and things that are going on in this town, maybe. I don't know. What is the deal? What's the problem? People are, we're just trying to make a living, you know? I just don't really understand what the problem is. And as far as a natural bluff that exists, nobody's proposing to build anything on anybody else's land. It's naturally there. Well, I don't, I really don't understand the issues here. You had a, the current property that he's, was a big drive-in movie theater, was it not? Big speakers, made lots of noise, going on till midnight, 1:00 in the morning, probably. Would y'all rather have that in y'all's community and having noise going on all night long from big speakers and thundering bass and vibrations through your house till midnight? Or would you rather only have an operation going on during the day that you can't even hear anyway? And don't forget, we do live in a desert. A reservation storm that comes in blows more dust in one storm than he'll ever produce in over 100 years.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, can we get the speaker's name and residency for the record, please?
Sorry, could you just share your name into the mic quick?
I've already done that, and you didn't require to say anything about a residency for anybody else. So my name's Bob Vercato's. That's what you get.
Okay, thank you. All right, next commenter?
Hello, I'm Nico Esco, and I would like to say that I wholeheartedly disagree with them not being able to put any kind of buffer up. And I oppose that idea because they just told us tonight that there is a floodplain there, and they can plant trees. Water naturally produces in that floodplain. They should be able to produce something, some sort of buffer for us, so that when we are walking on Carpenter's Trail, that we can actually enjoy the beautiful scenery that is there. And on top of that, I don't know for sure, but I imagine that Carpenter's Trail did not exist before the drive-in theater. And if it did, then I imagine that the theater was probably closed by a specific time, just like these guys are proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next commenter? Anyone else?
Are we good?
Okay.
My name is Paul DeWitt. I live on Ridge Drive, located above the applicant's property. I oppose approval of this conditional use permit for the primary reason that industrial activities are not compatible with residential areas. According to county GIS information, approximately 80% of this property east of Lebanon Road shares a border with open or residential properties. The vast majority of the homes and residences on Ridge Drive were established in the 1950s and 60s, well over a half-century before this property was purchased by the applicant. It has been claimed that the hill to the southeast buffers the homes from proposed industrial activities. The fact that these homes are on top of the hill is irrelevant. Colorado statute makes no mention of a home location, but only a property lines. These residential property lines extend well below the hill, making the hill discussion a moot point. That being said, during the community test, that Mr. Moore operated his loudest equipment, that operates at 25 decibels, or 13 times louder, was inoperable. So as far as I'm concerned, any of these noise assessments are invalid. It's also been stated that the road noise is louder than the proposed industrial activities. Again, this is irrelevant. Statute does not make provisions for industrial activities being quieter than the road. I also believe that previously stated economic benefits for, of permitting these industrial activities has been vastly overstated. Per the application, allegedly one to three homes per year at a price point of several hundreds of thousands of dollars each, not built within the city of Cortez, is clearly not addressing any housing problem. Nor have I seen or heard the number of jobs this is expected to create, or the number of cord firewood that will be produced. So these economic and noise arguments aside, by nature, industrial and residential uses are not compatible. What is the point of having zoning ordinances to begin with? By approving this conditional use permit violates both the intent and spirit of the land use code for the residential landowners. Permitting this conditional use permit devalues and marginalizes the expectations and rights of multiple established residential landholders, prioritizing a new landowner seeking special uses for a property. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anyone else from the audience who'd like to speak on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of this hearing, and we'll move on to council discussion. Who wants to start, or any comments or questions? Okay.
No, I just, I just want to make a comment that I do appreciate Mr. Moore meeting with, with educating him on his operation. We've received several letters saying that that really cleared up a lot of misconceptions, so I appreciate that.
I had a question for Nancy relating to the, relating to the A through H. My question was H, is, or have those been addressed? Is the additional staff requirements after engineering comments, is that what is reflected in the new site plan?
I believe so, but honestly, I didn't get to see the engineering, the revised plan until today. So I guess I'm a little more comfortable with you leaving it there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, do you have a comment? Okay. I, just about like landscaping in the industrial area, just being on planning and zoning and then on council for years, we've never really enforced that 10% on industrial zoning. And if I look at even, or, or uses like this, I think even the Cortez property doesn't have enough landscaping to meet those requirements. And considering that they have no water and we're in droughts, and I do think that it's, it would be hard to find a real buffer for that south side for the neighbors. I am in agreement with staff on kind of allowing an exception for, for that.
I move the council-approved resolution number five, series 2025, a resolution approving an additional use permit and site plan for property located at 1050 Lebanon Road, Cortez, as submitted by Anthony Moore and Mary Lancaster, with the eight conditions stated in the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Spruill and seconded by Lewis.
Lewis?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Bruhl?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move on to six on our agenda, unfinished business. We have none. So we'll move on to seven, new business. Seven A is appointment of a council member to represent the city in the Cortez 140th Anniversary Commemorative Logo Competition, presented by Helen West, our community and economic development specialist.
So hello, council and Madam Mayor. Give me just a minute. I have something I want to give the council members.
Great. Okay, don't eat it. Isn't that nice?
Thank you, Ellen.
So now, I get to be a little gimmicky. So if you guys didn't know, the city of Cortez was officially platted the day after Christmas, December 26th of 1886, which in 2026 will be 140 years ago. I am harkening back to the celebrations of our centennial. There's a poster on the back wall. I'm wearing a hat that is the logo from 1986. And I'm going to unfurl this banner just to remind us. Lynda keeps a lot of fun stuff in the back office.
Whoops, there were buttons in there. Well, and I've seen this logo at the Welcome Center, too. Oh, it's upside down. Nice.
So that is all to prepare you for this little memo that I'm going to talk about. So in 2026, the city will observe the anniversary of three important events. The 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. This correlates with a celebration nationwide for our 250th anniversary. This correlates with a celebration nationwide for our 250th anniversary. The 150th anniversary of Colorado's entrance into the Union as an official state. This corresponds with a statewide initiative to have kind of community engagement throughout our state, but also bring tourism into our state. And then the 140th anniversary of the plating of the city of Cortez. So to mark this special occasion, as I said, the United States is doing a bunch of different initiatives. The state of Colorado is also doing a bunch of different initiatives. And Kelly Cottner, our Public Information Officer, suggested that maybe the Arts Committee could hold a friendly competition with our city to design a commemorative, non-binding, we wouldn't keep it, it wouldn't be the new city of Cortez logo, but a commemorative logo for the 140th anniversary. It's a way to engage our community. The coloring book that the Arts Committee produced last year was a huge success, so this kind of just builds on that. As you heard in the interviews today, we have an incredibly artistic and creative community. People come out of the woodworks, and this could be a really cool way to showcase those skills. Anyways, in partnership with the city and the Historic Preservation Board and the Arts Committee, the city will be hosting a commemorative logo competition starting on Wednesday, April 10th. Nope, is that Thursday? Thursday, April 10th. Applications will be open to submit logos for about six weeks. I'm going to tell you, I can tell you some of the criteria for choosing the designs here in a minute. Anyone is allowed to submit. They can be from Cortez, they can be from somewhere else. We do ask them to have a little narrative about why they chose to represent our town in the logo that they designed. All logos must be submitted online through a JPEG. And then, a committee will choose a first place winner, a second place winner, a third place winner, and a youth winner that we specifically left rather ambiguous. If an eighteen-year-old wins the first place, we want to be able to give that youth prize to maybe a second grader or kind of move it around as needed to represent our youth in Cortez. The donation, or the prizes are generously donated by Cortez Retail Enhancement as Cortez Cash Cards, which are, can be used in any establishment in the city. I am here today to specifically ask for you guys to nominate one of you wonderful people to serve on that committee. The applications, as I said, are due May 27th. I will spend the 28th and the 29th packaging those logos, stripping the applications and the logo of any identifiable information so that the committee is a blind judge on those logos. Send them out so that the committee has at least three or four business days to review those logos on their own. And then we will come together sometime during the regular business day on Thursday, June 5th, or Friday, June 6th, to review and choose winners. The winning logo, the idea is that we will hire, this should not be that hard, but hire a graphic designer to quickly turn the logo in from a JPEG into a PNG, JPEG, PDF, and a vector image so that local businesses, similar to the way the state of Colorado is doing, you can download a vector image and put it on a shirt or a T-shirt and sell that. So the logo would be owned by the city of Cortez, and we could give that to businesses to download and use as they see fit, or any of our organizations in town, nonprofits. The city could make stickers or whatever we want to do for the celebrations of 2026. Any questions? Really briefly, just because I have a captive audience. As you're thinking about designing a logo, or if one of you would like to be on the committee, the, we are asking our committees to think about the following design elements to choose a winner. Striking design but easily recognizable. They should be visually appealing on both small and large scales. Unique while unmistakably from the city of Cortez, which I know is hard on a logo, they're pretty small. Reproducible in a variety of material types, including stickers, murals, T-shirts, et cetera. Logo should be square or circular in shape, avoiding long stretched-out design. Ideally, the logo could be presented in both full color and black and white, and it highlights the unique heritage of Cortez and the surrounding area, including the extensive history of peoples who have lived in this region for centuries before we were platted. And then finally, just as a disclaimer, not offensive. Any, I don't, yeah, I know, but you have to put that. So, yeah, I humbly ask you guys to choose one of you to represent the council on that review committee. We are hoping to present the winners on the June 10th council, right before July 4th.
I like the idea of having the, once the logo is picked, to have it publicly available for businesses to use, anyone to use, and then sell as they see fit, so.
Totally, and we can also put all of the applicants online for people to look at and kind of highlight just what a creative, incredible community we have.
Great. I guess any council members interested in being a judge for this? Please?
I'd be happy to be a judge. I've only lived here all my life.
I move the council appoint Dennis Spruill to represent the city on the Cortez 140th Anniversary Commemorative.
Second. All right, motion made by Dobree and seconded by Randall.
Dobree?
Aye.
Effer?
Aye.
Randall? Lewis?
Aye.
Bruhl?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye.
Thank you, council.
And thank you, Councilmember Spruill. Okay, we're going to move on to seven B on our agenda, Asset Management System Contract. Council will consider approving the quote from OpenGov Inc. as its contract price of fifty-one. City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just quickly, I don't want to steal Casey's thunder at all, but where we're coming from on this, this is about upping our game. And it is now time, in fact overdue, for the city of Cortez to do just that much better in managing our valuable city assets. And I'll, I look forward to hearing from Casey.
Great, so then we'll hear from our presenter, Casey Simpson, our General Services Director. Is that microphone not turning on?
Oh, there it goes. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Excited to be here tonight, and I've got Patty Martin from OpenGov here to answer any additional questions you have. We'll start with a short subject description, and I've got a slide deck for you guys to check out. And I'll finish with some background discussion and fiscal impact. Finally, a recommendation. Asset management software supports a proactive approach to efficiently maintain public assets, infrastructure. It creates the capacity for city staff to be able to access reliable and accurate sets of information, both historical and current. It will allow the city to warehouse and dashboard information, anticipate workflows and levels of service outputs, inventory infrastructures, understand real costs, and conduct predictive modeling and budgeting. In short, to make data-driven decisions. Over the last couple months, I've spent quite a bit of time diving into the world of asset management, and I, I've learned quite a bit, and I thought I'd share a little bit with you about kind of the nature of the different levels of asset management to provide some context for this decision. So when I started here with the city, I was made aware that we did have asset management software in place. It was what's typically a, or it's an entry level, we had an entry-level software, which I've called Tier One, pulling from my ed background. The basic asset management software has calendar-based work order scheduling. You can calculate labor costs and material costs, and you can create an Excel spreadsheet-type library of all your assets in order to schedule preventative maintenance. Most of these software solutions are mobile or cloud-based. You can use an iPad, a cellphone, or a computer in the field to, to track these assets or repair them in the field or maintain them in the field. An example of this would be Micromane, which is what we had, or e-work orders. They have a very short onboarding and implementation period because they're a fairly limited software solution. As you dive deeper into the world of software, asset management software, what I've called Tier Two, you get all of what I just talked about in the Tier One level, and you also get some GIS mapping. You get a vendor management function, which allows you to auto-order or pre-order inventory when your stock supply runs low. Many of these options have sign management, pavement management, water management, fleet management. They do have predictive cost analysis with one, three, five-year budgeting. The service life calculators, they integrate with Google Maps or ArcGIS. And depending on the solution, it can be two weeks or three-month-long implementation, both remote and possible in person. And lastly, what I found is that there's a few providers or vendors in the United States that have what I've called municipal asset management software, but what the world generally knows as enterprise asset management software. It has all of Tier One and Tier Two. However, these solutions are specifically designed for municipal and larger use. They have parks and recreation-specific functionality. They have a finance module that's similar to what we have as ClearGov. They have municipal budgeting and accounting, which I think is, acronym is ERP. They have utility billing. They have a public request portal. They have permitting, licensing. They have procurement and contract management. They have tax and revenue collection options. All of these solutions have a three-plus month implementation, and all of them have folks that come in person to help municipal staff collect and import all of the disparate data that the city staff collect. The selection matrix before you is something I created because what I found is when, when you initially, if we were to just put out a bid, for example, to get prices on these things, they range from, you know, on the low end, you're looking at two or $3,000. At the high end, you're looking at over $100,000 for software. So I felt it necessary to kind of highlight or map out just what the different options entail. For us, this is an opinion, but I think it's an important one. I think we do really want in-person training. The Finance Department made it clear that we want to be able to integrate with Casell, and that there, there should be an ERP finance solution as well available, should we want it. And as you can see, of all the companies I demoed, and each of these demos was over an hour. I spent quite a bit of time diving into the software. OpenGov was the only one that had, or was able to check all the boxes. This is from OpenGov. You can see the little proprietary logo in the top right, so I just, I didn't create this, I'm just saying. These are the different options. In my personal opinion, the long-term goal would be to have one software solution that operates as many of the, or houses the information for as many of the city functions as possible. That's what you're seeing before you here. You've got budgeting, planning, procurement, financials, tax revenue, asset management, and permitting and licensing. This is a map. It's kind of hard to see, but there's little dots that show all the places OpenGov is currently supporting municipalities, and then at the bottom are the Colorado locations. I don't think Carbondale's on there.
It's not a comprehensive list of Colorado customers, just a glimpse into who we're currently working with, specifically for the asset management solution.
In my role, the asset management solution is most definitely important. It allows you to know what you have, where people are working, and what they're working on, what resources you have to work with, and then how to plan for the future in terms of those resources. An example would be, when does a roof need to be replaced? Or when should we budget for new HVAC equipment that can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, things of that nature? In terms of assets, I wasn't aware of this moving into this position, but in the municipal world, assets can be anything from this computer to the pipes that distribute water throughout the city. So it's a much broader view of assets than I originally had, and I wanted to share that with you just so you understand how comprehensive this list of assets might end up being. Work, we have teams in every department doing work all the time. Work management could be developing an RFP or a bid document. It could also be removing a screen from the wall and replacing it with a piece of artwork. When we talk about resources, this will allow us to allocate resources to priority areas. Materials where they need to be, if we want to focus, if there's council focuses on specific elements in the community, or if we do need a roof replaced, it allows you to track and spend those resources, utilize those resources in a way that best suits the community. And then one of my favorites is infrastructure planning, getting ahead of it, being proactive instead of reactive, making sure we have a plan in place and the finances in place to, to build out skate parks. These are the professional services that are offered by OpenGov. And we felt, in viewing all of the demonstrations that OpenGov had, a really comprehensive professional services department. And I feel really good about their ability to onboard the city of Cortez. I believe this is one of the more important slides. On the left, in the initial column, it says, "Work orders are paper-based and handled manually. No central repository for assets. Maintenance is reactive, and decisions often rely on experience over data." This is how I feel right now. Just speaking for myself, I feel like it's pretty hard to manage all the assets the city has, and it's really hard to track down information on those assets. Skate park, for example, I'm trying to find the initial plans for the skate park. I can't find them. That just happened today, and we got a young fellow in the room talking about it, so I thought it was pertinent to bring that up. This type of software will track all that. It will map it. It will be in one spot. We'll know where to find it, and we'll all have access to it. Obviously, the end goal would be this optimized version where we're fully integrated and all the city functions are run through a software solution that allows everything to be as efficient as possible to really optimize the taxpayer dollar and all of our time. I think that's it for the slideshow. If it's all right with time consideration, I'll skip the background because I think I gave a lot of background there, and move down to discussion. "The senior leadership team has evaluated and determined that implementing a well-established asset and work management system is long overdue. The need to better manage the infrastructures and resources, both labor and capital, that is directly under the responsibility and purview of the departments, has never been so critical. With the trend of housing and population growth on the horizon locally and in the surrounding areas, it is certain that the infrastructures and the demand for services will experience the need for growth. Any quality of life measure is dependent on the reliability of basic infrastructure, services, and the community amenities. The need to maintain acceptable condition states while also upgrading infrastructures well beyond their lifespan will only continue to challenge the city, staffing levels, and operating capacities. Therefore, having a strategy and a systematic process to achieve full mandated and desired outputs by having a clear understanding of capital and operating needs, having a way to measure service response and the positive or negative returns on those investments is prudent governance. The city of Cortez does not currently have a comprehensive and consistent tool for tracking work orders, inventory streets, park assets, water distribution, facility maintenance, asset management, and/or conduct cost analysis. Participating city departments will experience significant uplift in its data-driven culture, data analysis, and accountability by purchasing asset management software. This software will increase the efficiency and allow for more effective deployment of city resources for all work connected to the system." All the participating departments have monies for the software that can be allocated. The total for this year is $51,780.63. There is opportunity for additional modules should we desire them in '26 and in the years following. Then my recommendation is for OpenGov as a well-established, or, OpenGov is a well-established system with a broad range of Colorado municipal users. OpenGov is competitively priced against other municipal government asset management. OpenGov is competitively priced against other municipal government asset management software solutions. It will integrate with Casell, which the city currently uses. And lastly, and perhaps most importantly, OpenGov has a robust onboarding and implementation process, which will be critical to helping our staff use this software and get comfortable with it and stay engaged with this accountability measure. If agreed upon by the city council, a possible motion would be, "I move that council approve the quote from OpenGov at their contract price of $51,780.63 for the asset management system contract, and that the city manager be authorized to negotiate and sign a contract on behalf of the city for this purpose." Any questions?
Questions? Go ahead.
Question in regards to the tech support. So after the hours of training that are built into the purchase of the software, how fast of a response time do you have regarding technical support? And is there a fee for that technical support, and how much, how much is that?
Yeah, the support is included in the fee that's listed out here, so there's nothing additional. There's different forms of support. You can call into our support team, we can remote assistance, there's a chat feature. All of our support is domestic as well, so we're not outsourcing any of that, and our typical response time is two minutes. Very quick.
Thank you.
So Casey, I have a question for you. So you mentioned that the departments, that there are going to be some departments that are involved initially right off the bat, and that there may, and that there'll be further involvement in the following year. So what departments are going to be involved initially, like jumping in with two feet and all the way in?
Yeah, that's a great question. The asset management function's going to be the first employed, and the departments with the most assets are Public Works and Parks and Rec, including my department with facilities. And it's, it's, it's a great time to do it as well, because Public Works team has been working really hard to get these master plans developed, so all of that data that's been collected and mapped out and all of that can hop right in, and we'll be able to see, for better or worse, the street conditions, every street in the city will be, you'll be able to see the health of that street in, in more or less real time. So it's pretty cool. And similarly with Parks and Rec, Creighton just described, trees are assets. Actually, there's, I don't know if it's like a joke or a saying, but trees are one of the only assets that get more valuable over time. Well, I think it's kind of a bell curve, because if they're not maintained and they start dropping limbs on people's cars, then it, you know, gets less valuable. But yeah, we want to make sure that those are all uploaded, and those kind of plans can be implemented as well. When the arborist provides this plan, we can start labeling trees within the, within the software.
You mentioned that we currently use Micromane, is that correct?
Micromane, I didn't know we used it until we got the bill, and we don't really use it.
Well, that was going to be my one question, is that an offsetting expense that, that will be coming off, something we're already paying for and that we wouldn't be in the future?
Yeah, it was used in the past. There may be some assets on it. It was mostly used for work orders according to the maintenance staff, so they weren't putting assets into a library, they were just, if they were to, I don't know, hang a picture or something, they would track their time in it, so there's not a whole lot to be gleaned from that system.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of a weird question for you. What's the life expectancy of this? Computers change every day, you almost need a new one once a year. Are we going to need to update? How often? Do you have any idea?
You won't need to, we will do that. It's a cloud-based software solution. We will take care of all the software updates on the backend, and through your annual subscription fee, which is included here on the agenda, you're going to get access to those updates. It's not something that you're going to have to invest in or pay more in order to get access to that. OpenGov's been around for 12 years, this asset management system even longer, and we very much so plan to be around for a lot longer.
Wow, that wasn't such a stupid question after all.
That was a great question.
Actually, really good one, too.
Yeah.
In a sense, some of the smaller tier-one asset management systems, as, you know, private businesses, small private businesses may be more variable in their existence, but the big municipal software companies, it's more likely that they stick around because there's just more, they're bigger, they have a vaster footprint.
I just want to say I like the fact that it is kind of tailored for municipalities. I also think that it's really important that you have support from senior staff, because I think that buy-in is really critical and maybe one of the downfalls of the previous system. And my question, I guess, around that is, if there's a lead person within each department that kind of takes that on, what does it look like for ongoing training and support? Like, say, somebody in that position leaves, and it, you know, took a significant amount of time to train them, what does that support look like? Does somebody come in to do that, or somebody else on staff spend time to, to help with that training?
I think there's, there's two pieces there. There's different user roles, so every, this software could touch every staff, every city staff member. Anyone, even the public, can submit work requests. So when we, when we think about who gets trained and how, if, we don't, it's not set up that there's going to be a, a tech person who's in charge of all the, all the things. At the admin level, there probably will be 15 users across all departments that have access or can see all of what's going on, and so I don't see one person leaving as being catastrophic. That being said, I, I guess would ask Patty if there's extra special training that could happen.
Yeah, and upon going live and getting through implementation and training, you'll be assigned a customer success manager. The expectation is you're meeting with them on a, on a monthly basis, probably more at the very beginning. So if something does happen where, you know, staff transitions and new people come in, and there need to be trainings, there's options for us to set up some time with some of our staff to go through that. Additionally, within the software system itself at no additional cost, there's onboarding guides, so if you do have a new staff who come in, they don't know what asset management is, let alone asset management software, we've got some guides for them to go through, through OpenGov University, it's called, and that's accessed through, again, the annual subscription fee.
I'm assuming that there will, however, be a lead person in each department in terms of the asset management aspect of it, that, that piece of it's not going to necessarily be open. The work order piece would be, you know, more people would have access to that within a department, but there would be like the director, or the department chair, or whomever, that would be mostly the asset management, is that correct? And you would kind of check in with them on occasion, or?
Can't speak for all departments, but that'll be me in general services, depending on the leadership style or structure in each department, there will be a point per, I mean, the departments would want a point person because they're going to be able to see all of the information that's being presented and then report out to you all. So yeah, somebody would have to be wanting to, and engaged in doing that.
And so how much time do we think it would take to get all our current assets uploaded? Because it seems like on the other end of it, once that was done and we acquire new things, it's a fairly easy process.
Anything currently existing in a GIS format, we're going to be able to bring over on day one. We've got an integration through Esri GIS. We've been goal business partners with them for well over a decade, and we've got a bi-directional integration with that system. So anything currently existing today, we'll be able to bring in. As Public Works invests in these master plans and asset data collection efforts, that data is then going to be pushed into the GIS, which again, we can then absorb through the native integration we have.
And the, yeah, the price diminishes after the first two years, which the first two years have that onboarding implementation, and the price goes down to just the annual subscription fee.
Did you have more questions, Robert? Okay. So is there a limited number of users for this?
Great question, unlimited users.
Okay, great.
It's actually one of the factors I didn't pull out for a specific discussion, but yeah, in investigating all these things, some had, you know, a maximum user or $2,000 per user, it, it varied, but OpenGov was one of the only ones that just had unlimited. I think you guys, the whole purpose of that is to get as many people using it as possible, not to have a gateway, so only certain people can, but everyone can use it.
I think that this is a really great opportunity for us to like, collect all this data, see this data, understand what's happened in the past, and help make better decisions in the future. I mean, watching what Creighton's gone through in the last few years with all the catastrophic capital projects, and just being able to be, like you said, more proactive, and then understand the cost of things, you know, like, especially with Public Works projects, like, how much does it cost for a mile of water, a water line, or road repair? It'll just help us make more informed decisions and understand like, the budget, budgetary needs. I guess my only question is, for the $51,000-plus dollars, do we need to make a budget amendment? Or is this, in, are you saying like, everyone kind of has the budget collectively to cover this?
I don't believe any amendments are necessary.
Okay. And then I also like the idea, well, one, I'll, I'll make a plug for GIS, because that's what I do in my professional life, so I'm really glad that it integrates with Esri products and Esri data. And then the, the public, you kind of breezed over it, but I think pulling in the, the public, like, okay, I have a pothole, or I had shattered glass on my street, you know, being able to like, punch that in and say like, hey, this is an issue, and then there's this paper trail of like, this complaint came in, this was dealt with, this is how much it costs to deal with this. I think that's, it's a great aspect for the public as well.
Absolutely, for sure. And yeah, all those will be collected, and we can, you can workflow that, so, you know, Public Works can receive pothole stuff where a tree limb might be routed to Creighton's department.
Yeah, great.
This is more of a, I guess, a future question, but if, so with the implementation over the two years, and then if Cortez picks up additional product lines that you do, are there additional implementations, implementation costs with those in the future?
There would be, yes.
And it varies on what module. I think finance is a huge one.
Yeah.
Some of the others aren't as big.
I think from a productivity, accountability, and efficiency standpoint, this software will more than pay for itself. So with that, Madam Mayor, I move that council approve from OpenGov Inc. at its contract price of $51,780.63 for the asset management system contract, and that the city manager be authorized to negotiate and sign a contract on behalf of the city for this purpose.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Keith Hoffer.
Brule.
Yes.
Keith Hoffer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Thank you, Casey, and love that you're just hitting the ground running in this position, so really appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to 7C in our agenda, intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Information Sharing Consortium, presented by Andy Brocker, interim chief of police.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. The Cortez Police Department has traditionally used an investigative tool called TLO to assist in locating individuals that are difficult to find. The tool has also been utilized to find next-of-kin of people who have deceased, and also finding associates of persons for fraud investigation. The incurred investigative tool is a per-use tool averaging $1,500 a year. Historically, only the detective division, six people, have had access to this tool. The Cortez Police Department came aware, became aware of the Colorado Information Sharing Consortium, the CISC, in February of this year. The police department is seeking council's approval to become part of the CISC. The CISC is a Colorado Criminal Justice Records Act Protected Law Enforcement Information Sharing System. And the system allows access to information from other agencies who are enrolled in it, and currently there are several agencies in the southwest region in Colorado that are part of the CISC. Some of those agencies are San Miguel County Sheriff's Department, the Monizuma County Sheriff's Department, Durango Police Department, the Colorado State Patrol, and La Plata County Sheriff's Department, all agencies that work with us and in our area. The information sharing system also allows access to at least two investigative tools, Accurant and Lumen, that can be utilized by all 30 certified officers, not just the detective division. Accurant offers similar information as far as finding people, but also could be utilized to produce a photo lineup to aid in the identification of individuals suspected of crimes. Currently, the police department does not have software or programming tool that allows us to produce photo lineups. With all officers having access to these tools, we'd be able to complete investigations in a more efficient and timely manner. Lumen is a, is very similar, but utilizes a separate database that would also aid in locating people. The information added to the CISC by the Cortez Police Department is adjustable, which means we can share what we want to share according to how, what sensitive content is needed. The CISC offers community crime maps showing where the majority of criminal activity is taking place. It's also endorsed by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. The CISC quote received and included will cost the city a flat rate of $700 a year to become a member and allow all 30 certified officers access with no additional cost. The term of the CISC IGA is unlimited and would be, would extend until terminated by either party. So we're recommending that the mayor sign the Colorado Information Sharing Consortium, intergovernmental agreement. Any questions?
I'll have you know, I read almost 64 of those pages, just.
Oh, bless you.
Does larger departments pay more money, or is it across-the-board $700?
I, I believe, what I read was across-the-board $700. Kind of amazing.
It is amazing. Denver does a little bit more than we do, and yet we're paying exactly the same amount they are.
We're paying twice that right now, without getting all the benefits, so.
Yeah, great costs. Cost savings.
Really, it is.
I move that council, are we ready for this?
Yeah.
I move that council approve the Colorado Information Sharing Consortium, intergovernmental agreement to allow the city to become a member next $700 a year, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Randall and seconded by Dobree.
Keith Hoffer.
Keith Hoffer.
Aye.
Brule.
Yes.
Dobree.
Yes.
Lewis.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, we're going to move on to 7D. We have a agenda results of proposals for contract geographic information system service. We'll consider the award for GIS services and authorize the manager to negotiate and sign a contract, presented by Brian Peckins, our Director of Public Works.
Madam Mayor, City Council, as most of you know, Doug Roth, who's been our GIS specialist for close to 10 years, is leaving us, so we're actively seeking a replacement for him to provide GIS services. Generally, he worked about eight hours per week. We went out for bids, and there were 10 proposals from all over the country. We had, we do have money budgeted in the general fund for contract GIS services, and city staff with representatives from Public Works and General Services conducted a review of the 10 submitted proposals. Staff believes that Nolan Nota, who works for, also works for Monizuma County, is best positioned to fulfill the city's requirements for GIS services. He provides a competitive rate, expertise in enterprise-level GIS, and is currently working for Monizuma County. It is a recommendation from the selection committee that Nolan Nota be chosen for the contract GIS services. Subject, any questions?
Before we start, any questions, I just wanted to notify everybody. I also work for Monizuma County, but we, Nolan Nota and I, don't share any reporting lines, and I spoke with our attorney, and he said there's, there's no concern and no reason for me to recuse for myself from this issue.
Unless I'm mistaken, didn't Doug Roth also do the same position with the county, and kind of, county and the city both, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And I would guess, Rachel, I mean, Mayor Medina would probably know more than I would about it, but it would seem like there would be some advantages to having the same person doing GIS for the county and the city both.
Yeah, I, I will definitely advocate for Nolan being a county GIS employee, and then also for the city, making sure that then the data matches is seamless, because that was one of the big initiatives when I was at the county in the GIS department, was trying to get our data to match with the region, and then that way, in an emergency situation, you can provide data that's you can provide data that's, covers the region and is not just segmented to the different areas and, and can't make sense of each other. So I think it's great that Nolan has applied to do this and I think that there is a huge advantage to him being at the county and also just knowing this community and the people and kind of have those same practices. I assume that then he'll also be the one that providing like public comment or agency review for planning?
Yeah.
Things, okay.
He'll, he'll be doing the same thing.
Okay, great. Because I think that's valuable, because then also the benefit of his job is he knows how to read plots and understand site plans, because those comments are always valuable too.
Madam Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion that council award for contract geographic informational system, GIS services to Nolan D. Nota and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign a contract with Mr. Nota on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion made by Keith Hoffer and seconded by Lewis?
Randall?
Aye.
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Brule?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, well then we'll move on to seven E on our agenda, memorandum of understanding for geographic information system resources. It's a, an MOU with Monizuma County, presented by Brian Peckins.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Council, and this was just what you were talking about is sharing data. In 2009, Monizuma County and the towns of Mankas and Dolores entered into an MOU for sharing GIS resources. Unified data was needed to support E-911 and as it expanded to include the city of Cortez and Dolores. From a technical standpoint, municipalities find it advantageous to avoid the duty of managing their own servers for GIS data hosting and mapping services. Conversely, Monizuma County GIS benefits from having the data hosted on their servers, just for the reasons you talked about, for 911 services and that sort of thing. We're just looking to sign a MOU. There's no fiscal impact to the city and city staff recommends that council approve and authorize the mayor to sign the MOU with Monizuma County for sharing GIS resources. And it's my understanding that it's already been signed by the other parties and so our recommendation is that you sign the MOU.
I think it's a good idea to formalize that kind of relationship, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve the memorandum of understanding between Monizuma County and regional partners regarding a cooperative agreement to enhance geographic information systems and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city of Cortez.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Spruul?
Lewis?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Brule?
Yes.
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to seven F on our agenda, bid results, the 2025 Concrete Cost Share Project, presented by Brian Peckins, our Director of Public Works.
Madam Mayor, City Council, the city of Cortez provides an annual sidewalk cost share program to help residents and business owners either install new sidewalk or replace deterior, deteriorated sidewalk on their property. The program encourages and promotes improvement of our public walkways by offering a 50% cost share agreement with local residents and businesses. The bid opening was held on March 25th with four bids received. The Street Improvement Fund has a total of $190,000 and we also have $150,000 from Parks and Recs budgeted for concrete curb and gutter replacement in the golf course path. There are six citizens that are participating in this year's Concrete Cost Share Program. Staff recommends that the 2025 Concrete Cost Share Project be awarded to Daniel's Contract at their bid price of $288,956.25. That is approximately 11% lower than the engineer's estimate and $51,000 under budget. According to the city's local vendor preference, Daniel's Concrete is within 2% of SNS's bid and should receive local vendor preference as dictated by Council Resolution Number 14, Series 21. So they were, they were a little bit higher, but with the 2%, they're lower and so we're going to, we're recommending Daniel's be awarded the contract. Subject, any questions?
I move the council accept and approve the bid for the 2025 Concrete Cost Share Project to Daniel's Concrete LLC at its bid price of $288,956.25 and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign a contract on behalf of the city for this purpose.
Second.
Motion made by Spruul and seconded by Dobree?
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Brule?
Yes.
Dobree?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to seven G on our agenda, the bid results for the 2025 Street Striping Project, presented by Brian Peckins, Director of Public Works.
Madam Mayor, City Council, council will consider awarding the 2025 Street Striping Project to Branson Roadworks based out of Durango, Colorado. Public Works staff drafted specifications for furnishing and installing approximately 1,100 gallons of paint marking material on city streets, which includes yellow and white paint for street and bike line striping. The bid opening was held on March 25th, 2025 with three bids received. We also, since 2013, the city has authorized an escalation clause in the contract for street striping that states that we can automatically renew the bid for an additional year at up to 3% additional. All of this striping on the streets in Cortez needs to be refreshed and it is more effective to outsource this task due to the lack of appropriate striping equipment that we have in-house. We do, in-house, we do 13 parking lots, we do crosswalks and we do the schools, but for the major, major street work, we have, we have contracted striping. The monies are budgeted each year in the Public Works General Fund Traffic Services and the staff recommends awarding the bid for the 2025 Street Striping Project to Branson Roadworks at their bid price of $43,544.50 with an escalation clause for three years, which is considerably, considerably below the $58,000 we had budgeted for the striping. Subject to your questions.
Have we used them before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are, are you having a hard time getting people to bid on this?
We had, we had three bidders. We've had less and we've had more, but I think that was.
I guess my question is, why, why do we want to go into a three-year bidding process? Do we feel that it could go up so much that we can't or, or we just don't want to go through the process anymore? Or what's the reason?
It's, it's just convenient. It's more for convenience that we, we have that, we have them in place and we don't have to go out and, and go through the bidding process each year for the same type of work.
Do we do that with any other service that we contract in like that?
I don't think so, no.
Do, you said they do the road striping, but do they do parking spot striping as well as part of that contract or is that city?
That's generally the city. We do, we have their parking lots that we do.
Sorry, road, road parking, not parking lots.
You mean like a main street and?
Yeah, yeah.
Like in front of K S J D?
Normally our.
Okay.
And, and on this to, to do it out three years, the scope of work doesn't change as, as it would in other projects. So the scope of work's the same. So to be able to bid it out for three years with that 3% would just save time and money.
And this is probably going to be a little talk between council if, if they choose to. The only issue is that, is there a possibility it could get cheaper? And if we have someone that we have a three-year contract, it's certainly not going to get cheaper because they know they're going to get the job. So that's just something I think we need to discuss.
The city does have the right to renegotiate if there's extenuating circumstances.
Well, and I'd say the, the cost difference between these, these other two bidders, they're even adding 3% each year. It's still lower than like the next.
Yeah, and I, I was going to say, I think if it was a 5% or higher escalator, I would have, I would have more concerns, but 3% is really probably going to cover the cost of additional paint and that's a.
Also, it seems like a pretty specific operation, that there wouldn't probably be that many companies in the area. I'm actually kind of impressed that you got three that are fairly close to here. And I have seen Branson do work before in the community. I feel like they're probably a pretty reputable outfit.
So I move that council accept and approve the bid for the 2025 Street Striping Project to Branson Truck Control Company, DBA, Branson Roadworks at its bid price of $43,544.50 and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign a contract with the three-year escalation clause on behalf of the city for this purpose.
Second.
Motion made by Randall and seconded by Keith Hoffer?
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Dobree?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to seven F on the, or sorry, seven H on the agenda, results for proposals for water line distribution network master plan, presented by Brian Peckins, Director of Public Works.
Madam Mayor, City Council, between 1950 and 1975, the city's distribution network saw the installation of 129,000 linear feet of cast iron pipes. They have surpassed their intended service life. These water lines are a top priority for replacement. Public Works recently sent out a request for proposal to experienced engineering firms for a water line distribution network master planning initiative. On March 26th, we, we received three proposals from Earth Art Engineering, Jones and DeMille, and SGM, which is our current online or on-call engineer. Public Works has budgeted money in the water fund capital projects to cover the water line distribution network master plan. Staff believes that SGM is best positioned to fulfill the city's requirements. SGM will compile a prioritized project list and cost estimates to facilitate the city's budgeting for systematic upgrades and renewals of the aging water system over the next 10 years. Based on SGM's overall proposal, it is recommended from the selection committee that SGM be chosen for the water line distribution network master plan. And as I mentioned, we've worked for them, we've worked with them considerably in the past. They're our on-call engineer and they had the best proposal. Subject, any questions?
I have a curious question about the scope of services to be provided as listed on the proposal scoring matrix. So they scored a little bit less than Jones and DeMille and I was kind of wondering what the scope of services to be provided, how that differed in just that. And my second question along this line was along the schedule of work. The schedule of work is when they're supposed to do the work? Is that what I'm?
Yeah, their, their timeline for, for completion. And, and the scope of services, I, I think Jones and DeMille was, was rated a little bit higher because they've done more, more of this type of work for, for smaller communities.
Gotcha.
But overall, we felt like SGM had a better overall proposal.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that council accept and approve the bid for the Water Line Distribution Network Master Plan submitted by Schmoozer Gordon Meyer, SGM, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign a contract on behalf of the city for this purpose.
Second.
Motion made by Keith Hoffer and seconded by Lewis?
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Brule?
Yes.
Lewis?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, we're going to move on to seven I on our agenda, appointments to the Arts Advisory Board and the Library Advisory Board. As we interviewed folks for our openings during our workshop, so.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, council interviewed some applicants for the advisory boards. Sorry to say, two of the application, applicants that we had were not able to make that, but we did have applicants for that Arts Advisory Board that did appear and two for the Library Advisory Board. Council can make appointments or we can continue to advertise for, council would prefer. The Arts Advisory Board is for a two-year seat and we do have two openings and the Library Advisory Board's for a three-year seat and we have one opening currently.
All right, well, you know, we had two interview, two to interview for the Arts Board and two openings, so I think that's easy unless anyone wants to advocate for the person that didn't make it. But then we can talk about the Library Board, because we had two great applicants, but only one spot.
Felt like the Arts Advisory Board candidates both were really strong with a lot of experience and some on-the-ground trainings. I would advocate that we accept those two at least.
In, in regards to the library applicants, I thought both of them were very well qualified. Both had their expertise, but in my opinion, Katrin Smith stood out just a, a little bit more and I would propose that she be recommended for the library position.
I would second that. I like that she mentioned listening sessions and strategic planning process. And I believe she said she went to a Friends of the Library meeting to kind of get a lay of the land. So those are things I think are a plus in her favor.
I'd agree with all, all of those choices as well.
Great. And I do think even though this would be her first time being on a board, everyone needs that chance to experience their first board. And so I think this is a great opportunity to, to get more people interested and more, more people trying out boards and kind of be that catalyst to be a public servant.
I agree on the arts. We, the two that showed up and give, are going to be great. The library, Susan would be excellent, but I thought Katrin brings youth and a little energy and I just, I liked her presentation. And so I would agree with everybody.
So I move that council appoint Daniel Osborne and Desiree Henderson to the Arts Advisory Board for the two-year seat and also that Katrin Smith be appointed to the Library Advisory Board for a three-year seat.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Randall and then seconded by Dob, or Keith Hoffer?
Dobree?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Brule?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, great. We're going to move on to eight on our agenda, draft resolution order, question number nine, is city attorney report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to 10, city manager report?
I won't have a report this evening, Mayor.
Okay. All right, so number 11 is city council committee reports. So 11A is the mayor's report on the workshop. So in our workshop tonight, we had just our interviews for the boards where we just appointed members to the Arts Committee and the Library Board. And then also just as a new, new process, just going to summarize the public comments we got earlier in the night and we had a gentleman speak about the skate park and suggested a company to help with the repairs for it that he know has, he knew that they've done work in Durango and then also reflected on 2018 initiative for the skate park. And so I thought that was good information to know about, that there was an article in the paper and that we sanctioned that as like a graffiti area for the community. So then we'll move on to other board reports. We can start with council member Dobree?
Last week, I attended the Mesa Verde Country Board Meeting and we, we talked a little bit about potential impacts on our community from, from government cuts to staffing. on our community from government cuts to staffing, both for Mesa Verde and for, and for Canham. And then the other thing kind of that relates more to us is with Kelly Koski's departure, we will need to appoint a new other member of city member to that, to the Mesa Verde Country Board. So I think we can confer with staff and see if they have some recommendation sometime for the near future. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great.
I attended the Historic Preservation Board Meeting last week. They've got some wonderful things outlined for the upcoming month, and I think that it's going to be exciting to see them all rolled out. So there's talk about what's to happen in the future and more planning ahead, but other than that, I think it's pretty status quo and holding forward. On a second note, I had the opportunity to participate or at least go over and visit with the Southwest Colorado Water Conservation District meeting, the 41st Annual Meeting. Patrick Coleman was kind enough to let me travel with him on the 28th of March. It was, I thought, wonderful that our own Brian Peckins, Director of Public Works, was participating in a panel discussion on Smart Water, Smart Cities. Also on that panel were representatives from Durango, Pagosa Springs, and Aurora, and I thought that you did very well, and you did us proud. One thing that was really interesting, I thought, was that we were one of the only communities that were represented on that panel that are participating in the use of the Polaris tool, which was just phenomenal. And a second note, thanks again, Brian and Mr. Coleman. I thank you for all your expertise in water that you bring to our table, which I did not have a good grasp of until I had the opportunity to visit with you. So your, the experience you bring to us is really impressive. Thank you. And thanks for attending that. That's great.
The Golf Advisory Committee met March 28th. Creighton introduced his Assistant Director. There was discussion about how the golf course opened up March 1st, and for the month of March, we've exceeded last year's revenues. Let's see, the Dolores Girls and the Cortez Girls golf teams are utilizing the course. What took up most of the time was the issue of private carts. Currently, our golf pro provides carts for the public to rent. Anytime there's a private cart that interferes with his revenue. We also have a cap on private carts of 80, and we have more applicants wanting to utilize private cart. I think we have a waiting list of six people. So in the short term, we've established we will just charge those individuals that exceed the 80 carts that was adopted in, I think, 2016. We'll charge those individuals $10 per day for usage. And then at our next meeting, we are going to try to finalize some specifics on this and have that group come back and amend the ordinance where they'll lift that cap off and look at increasing the percentage that the golf pro gets. Currently, he gets 10% of the private cart fee. And I think it was, it was $675 last year for a private cart pass, and this year it went up to $750. That's my report.
Madam Mayor, on Thursday, April 3rd, the Parks Recreation Forestry Advisory Board met. We had some subcommittee reports. The Forestry Subcommittee, I believe, will be meeting tomorrow. And one of their focuses will be on Arbor Day. And the Rec User Group, we had a report about that. Their format is, for their meetings is much clearer, so they, I think, have more of a direction and makes it a little bit more applicable for us to figure out what things are fixable and things that, you know, are in the works, but we haven't quite gotten to yet. We talked a little bit about the committee handbook, and we selected a vice chair and secretary for our committee as all committees that are part of the city are doing. They're becoming a little bit more formalized, so we are following that structure as well. We had a discussion about the meeting day and time, and we brought up the fact that we still have two, places for two youth members, and that's really difficult for them to make a meeting at 3:00 on a Thursday afternoon because of school. So I'm going to try to reach out to the principal at Southwest Open School and at the high school to see exactly when meetings might work, and we might make a change to make that happen. And then I think one of the really valuable things that we did at that meeting was we did a SWOT activity as part of the strategic planning process for Parks and Recreation, and I think a lot of good information was shared. So it was a great meeting.
And SWOT stands for strengths, weaknesses?
Strength, weakness, opportunities, and threats.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Okay. And then I attended the Arts Advisory Committee meeting last night, and there's the 81321 Launch Application Round One just closed, and then the next one will open, I think, again in May. We talked about also Third Thursday, just the projects, and having a booth at Third Thursday. And then also, supporting First Fridays, which is art-focused, as well as a 2025 Work Plan for the Arts Committee. And then, of course, the logo competition that where Councilmember Dennis Spruul is offered to be part of the panel for judging and selecting a logo winner in June. So the application process for the logo competition starts this Thursday until May 27th. And then also, they are partnering with events happening around the 4th of July, and then just looking at supporting a group that wants to create a Creative Arts District. Okay. We'll move on on our agenda to 12 other items of business. We do not have an executive session tonight, so 13 is public participation. All right, seeing no one from the public, we will, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
A motion made by Dobree and seconded by Louis.
Louis.
Aye.
Randall. Keith Hoffer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, thank you all for being here tonight. Good night.